Let's go to call the September eleventh, uh, school committee meeting to order. Uh, first up, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands by our nation and our government, and with all the liberty and justice for all.
Um. I'm gonna get to the agenda. I wanted to say a really, uh, quick condolences to Norton High School, um, head baseball coach Chris O'Brien. Uh, so if we can just take a quick moment to remember Chris. Thank you. Uh, for the agenda, uh, vote to approve minutes from the August twenty-eighth open session meeting. School committee, have we all got a chance to review them? Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh-huh. I listen to you.
Oh, sorry. Uh, I'm sorry if anybody else is recording. We are recording the meeting. Uh, if anyone else is recording, please just stop.
So that one was four, is it?
Four, zero, sorry.
Correct. Yeah, thank you.
Um, usually it's shabby, but I think it's just team tonight, so a couple of ones.
Um, I have reviewed and approved the following warrants. School expense warrant, August twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and two and eighty-five cents. And school payroll warrant, August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, two hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight and sixteen cents. Um, I wish to enter, enter, enter public record. Thank you. It's a team.
Thank you. And, uh, this time we'll, it's our first meeting with, uh, with Benson, so we will turn the floor to you.
Thank you guys for having me. Really excited to be here. Um, so a quick update. Norton Middle School welcomed a new sixth grade class on August twenty-eighth. We had robust attendance for both students and families alike. The event was its usual success with various staff participating alongside members of our student council, who were present to answer questions and offer assistance. NMS triads and sports are underway with both the boys and girls soccer teams having won their first matches of the season yesterday. The volleyball team had over forty students come out for tryouts and announcements about the roster should be coming soon. NMS clubs have also begun holding informational meetings and sign-ups. Our clubs have historically had great participation from our students and this year appears to be no different. Lastly, NMS also welcomed several new staff members this year in various roles and we wish other staff members the best of luck in their positions within the building due to several retirements and budget cuts. The JCS, Mr. Barrett, right? Mr. Barrett's first year as principal, he is getting to know the school's culture and routine. All teachers have been working with students to model and practice PBIS expectations for different parts of the school day, to help students get back into the rhythm of school, pick a formative meeting, help order launch the expectations during recess, the process for arrival and dismissal. Students in grade one, two, and three are our guest announcers each morning, leading the morning announcements over the P A, including the pledge of allegiance. Because Mr. Barrett is a former music teacher, he has slowly been visiting classrooms to introduce students to silly songs that he used to sing with the students at all school meetings at his prior school. And lastly, the new year at Norton High School is off to a great start. Teachers have been busy building routines and community within their classrooms. Guidance counselors have been very busy making sure that all students' schedules meet their needs. Seniors have a lot to look forward to at the beginning of the year with the sunrise at five forty-five A M. on Friday. And the senior crew is seeing black and white, full of lights, higher than any Friday night.
Thank you, Benson. Um, number four, um, Principal Gagnon.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
There you go.
Better? Yeah, awesome. Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you for having me. Thank you for being here at the L. Uh, we had an excellent opening of school yet again, and, uh, so I tried to put together some slides that just kind of highlight it and because I believe that pictures are a lot better than words, um, to kind of show. But, uh, we have our amazing, uh, pay P T O, uh, parents and some of the children come the night before school and kind of chalk the walk for the kids to kind of see that, uh, we're trying to welcome them and try to tell them like how much we care about them and how much we want them to be in school. As Dr. Ackerman has definitely said that, uh, we're big on attendance and want them to be there. Um, so new year, new beginnings and, uh, new ways to communicate. Uh, I definitely have been a humongous pro- proponent of, uh, Twitter and then the nasty X. And, uh, I always kind of believed that maybe people always said like social media is a terrible place and all it is is just disdain and, and just hatred back and forth. And I thought maybe we could be a bright spot and just kind of be like a spot that people can kind of see some nice things going on, smiling kids' faces and just kind of like happiness. And, uh, so I've done that for many, many years, but in the last few years, uh, definitely with Elon taking over, uh, Twitter, you kind of saw that the people on Twitter hasn't had like the, the poll it used to have. Like I would, I would sometimes tweet between six to twelve, uh, different like tweets a day for being in classrooms and just kind of breaking down that third wall. And so people can kind of see what, what fourth and fifth grade looked like in the years of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, now twenty twenty-four. And, um, and it might end up getting like two or three likes from those six or seven tweets. Or maybe one response or one, and it's like, if I'm just tweeting it to the wilderness and no one's seeing it, uh, does anyone hear it or know it? So, uh, so we've switched ourselves to Instagram and, uh, so far we've gotten a lot more, uh, kind of reaction from it, which has been good, uh, because that's what we want. We don't want to just do it just to do it. We want it to be something that, uh, that people see. Uh, every week I put out a newsletter and I'll touch on in a minute. And I always do this one big picture that kind of summarizes kind of our week and highlights our week. And so we have the chalk, walk the chalk, chalk the walk. We, in our first couple of days of school, we kind of call it the first three days, really put the academics aside and as most schools are doing, most teachers are doing. We're building a relationship. The foundation of relationships is so important, uh, with kids. And we want to get to know our kids and have them get to know us as the adults in the building. So that's part of our kind of big picture and then a bunch of these other little ones I'll kind of highlight as we go through. Let's see. So the first few days are kind of cooperative learning, uh, collaboration, uh, kids working together, kids getting to know each other, two truths and a lie, uh, teachers kind of throwing it out there. Kids having to line up according to their birthday without talking and how they can kind of communicate with one another. Building a paper chain, all the things that you would see these first few days of school, uh, last week. Let's see. Let's see. Go. Uh, they bring in like a, a bag all about who am I, write about who am I, bring in the bag that has three items that they have to take out. And Mr. Bilal was involved in that one there, uh, but just, just seeing the kids smile, seeing the kids get back into it, seeing the edging them back into the learning before we get back into it. Um, so that, uh, yes, they're running into school the first day of school. Can they run in those other days is really the thing we, the challenge that we have that we want to do. Um, so. Um, but, uh, but just little things here and there that we are working on so that the kids kind of get together. Uh, we have this thing that we've done called Good News Called Day. Uh, it probably got, uh, Bob Bilal, the assistant principal of the year for Massachusetts because, uh, he gets to do it and he gets to write about it. Um, but, uh, but we, we last year did four hundred twenty-five, uh, good news calls of the day. We had a school building of about three hundred fifty kids, so that kind of tells you the numbers that we were able to do. We shot for two per day, uh, which would have made three sixty. We did four twenty-five. Uh, so far this year we are on pace to do again three sixty or above. Um, but it's just one of those amazing things where any adult in the building can, can kind of notice students doing something good, something nice, something for a friend. And maybe, maybe they're having a great morning, maybe they're having a great day, maybe they just had a great twenty-five minutes. Get them a good news call and see what happens, but, uh, it makes everyone happy. It makes, uh, the students smile. It makes the parent usually cry, uh, that we're talking to and saying like what an awesome thing your child has done. Um, it makes us happy in the office and it definitely makes that teacher and that adult whoever nominated that student happy. And, uh, they get to go to the book vending machine and pick out whatever they like. That's been, uh, kind of supported by our P T O. Can't thank them enough for all the, the money that we've been able to raise and been able to put into that. And we already had these two young students right here. First week of school have already collected fifty hashtags, which we give them out, we hand them out. Uh, all adults are seeing kids do good things. We hand out these P B I S, uh, hashtags. And when they collect fifty, they can hand them in. These guys handed it in by Friday. How they got fifty? I don't know. Were they printing them at home? I don't know, but they're, uh, it's amazing. Um, but, uh, let's see. That's showing too many pages. Um. Come on. Say. Uh, we continue positive sign Thursday is something I've done now for, I think this is my eleventh year of doing positive sign Thursday. Uh, I put a little like, uh, happy saying on it to kind of highlight usually the week what's been going on and, uh, walk around with my phone and the sign and kids get in and some of the fourth grade kids that know of it are into it. Some of the fifth grade kids that have done it now, that they say that they did it every week last year, maybe. Uh, they, uh, so I try to like snap a picture, put it together, but, uh, we're just so happy that they're here. And it's always so nice to see smiling kids. Um, we like, uh, Benson said, like we have a morning announcement group that goes for a week, fifth grade. Already got the calendar booked through November with a different group of kids, uh, to do the announcements. It's always just so fun to hear them because they're so nervous that first day. And it's like, you talk, you know how to talk, you guys could do it. No one sees you and we have this old system with the phone and they don't even know what that is with the, with the cable to it. What, what is that going on? But, uh, but by the end of the week, they're just so proud of themselves and they feel like they've accomplished something. And, uh, it's always so much fun. Um, and, uh, from there. Let's see. This week has been started to be pictures of learning. Uh, so we have a brand new reading program, uh, called Into Reading. We have our math program into year two stepping stones and the kids are basically starting to get into it. And again, leaning them into it, but they're, they're getting into it already. Teachers have been great of the lessons and activities that they're doing with their literacy centers and math center. So a lot of the things that we did before we even got the curriculum, we're continuing to do just with the new curriculum. So. Um, more pictures of learning, more kids smiling, got outside on the turf. Uh, it's just been so amazing. Great, great weather. Mr. Hayward and I were just talking about. It's always nice to have nice weather during those first couple of weeks of school. Uh, that helps out greatly in having them get here and be here and be happy. So there they are in some of their centers and circles and working together. And, um, and like I said, we're now on Instagram. Got all the pictures on there, lots of, uh, likes, lots of, uh, comments from people. Um, i- it's been excellent to kind of see. And like I said, it's not just me tweeting it out. It's for people to kind of see and see what learning looks like in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, because yes, we've all gone to school, but, uh, it, it's different now than it definitely has been in the past. Smile.
Need to rest your finger after this.
And then, like I said, my new weekly newsletter, something to yell about, I think one of the greatest names of a newsletter ever. With, uh, we kind of use that picture. I again take a lot of the pictures that we put in. We put it all on there for the parents to kind of see and the families to kind of, uh, relish. And, uh, and that's kind of our first, what do we name on the day?
Seven.
Day seven, day seven. So we're doing pretty well. I think the kids are coming back, so we're all good. Um, but, uh.
We're ready. That's right. Thank you.
Great.
It's awesome.
Have you shattered any more students on their bus route?
I have not. Uh, that's something I, I, I took a break from, but, uh.
That was the point yesterday, except you didn't bring me coffee.
But, uh, no, I, I think I'm gonna get that back rolling. Uh, I just haven't, uh, I'm like. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then a little thanks for, yo. Uh, number five, Dr. Neil for personal update.
All right. Thank you. Um, so one of our favorite things to do each year is to, um, honor welcome back day of recognize , um, years of service, uh, for our staff. Uh, and this year we recognize, uh, many, many people and I'm going to kind of just go through them very quickly. Uh, recognizing ten years of service to Norton Public Schools. Kelly Allen, Tracy Blanchett, Lori Cattani, Jen Farley, Steve Go, Sydney Hayward, Rachel Kearney, Kim Lella Burton, Carol McTann, Jen O'Giba, Kate Rico, Christina Schillingo, Julie Smith, Krista Frimoli, Nick Terese, Melissa Thompson, Jen Smalley, Karen Wispert, Kim Sajak. That's nineteen staff members with, um, ten years of service. Fifteen years of service, Bob Barbosa, Aaron Sumner, and Jill Robleski. Twenty years of service, Paula Beishine, Christina Burchard, Lauren Bukowski, Ronnie Goldstein, Suzanne Hamlin, Kara Immanen, Laura Vermundi, Allison Koscus. Twenty-five years of service, Deborah Hearn, Mary Bennett, Jerushua Bjork, Jen Brango, Martha Clark, Denise George, Julie Guarini, Lisa Barney, Jen Young. Two staff members that have thirty years of service to Norton Public Schools, Suzie Cashin and Sarah Porton. And one staff member that has forty years of service to Norton Public Schools, which is just amazing and mind blowing. Um, it's Diane, Diane Lemieux. So, um, I think it's really important that these people are recognized for their years of service. Uh, we always do this on our first day. I think it's important. I'll include you here this as well. Um, as well as our, you know, friends at Homer, which is always part of our public record. Um, the dedication to Norton Schools, uh, through the good times and the bad is just something to really, really be proud of. And I'm also sharing with you our retirements from this past year. Karen Giat- excuse me, Karen Giatrellis, Bill Kuzmic, Mary Blätter, Sharon Mulligan, Barbara NATO, Sue Sethlaugh, Deb Ward, and Marion Walsh. And thank you to all of those people for their dedication to Norton as well. The other, um, item I have for you tonight is our staffing recap. Um, and you'll notice it's four pages long. And this kind of is a, um, good peek behind the curtain of what actually happens every year. And you can see that there are just so many staffing changes from one year to the next. As, um, I just shared, we had eight retirements. Um, we had resignations. We had twenty-six staff members that were part of that layoff, non-renewal, reduction in force category. And then you'll also see all of those reassignments and people that are taking on new roles within our school community this year because of those reductions, or because they are looking for a change themselves. Um, and then at the end you'll see our appointments and what you'll see next to them are the reason that these staff members, these new staff members have been appointed. I feel like that was really, really important for me to include with you, especially as this becomes part of, um, our documents from tonight. It's really important for people to see that, as I mentioned, um, to you at our last meeting, as I mentioned to the finance committee earlier this week, um, our twenty-nine layoffs went down to twenty-six. Um, two were paraprofessional positions that were recalled due to student need, new students that moved into Norton, um, that were in need of additional assistance. And then the other, uh, recall was the sixth school nurse, uh, which I'm very happy that we were able to do, um, simply because the, the medical needs of our students are, are so important and we have to make sure that we have that coverage as needed. Um, so I felt this is important for you all to be able to see those retirements, the resignations and everything else that kind of was a catalyst um, for these hires. So, uh, making sure that we're ahead of the narrative in terms of the community because we all know that new hires come through my office, they go to town hall, um, they sign up for benefits or whatever may happen. Um, but it is really important for everyone to see that, um, we can account for each of those positions. And ultimately it was not any new positions or added to the bottom line. I'm happy answering questions for you regarding, um, either of those documents.
Um. One thing I, I, I just would like to see future state is when we look at the retirements, I would just be curious to see like their years of service, to just see like the wealth of knowledge that.
Walked out the door.
Yeah, exactly.
Absolutely. There's a lot of wealth of knowledge that walked out this door and it's, um, you're so happy for these people that are able to take this next step and this new chapter and it's something I think we all dream about someday, that retirement. Um, but it's, it's, it's really difficult to lose such wonderful educators.
Yeah, that's it. That would just, when I was looking at the list.
Yeah, exactly.
Just kind of. Um, you know, I know two of my children went back to see one teacher that was retiring, they had her. Um, which is good to hear anyway, but just, it's more of a curiosity. It's nothing.
And then, um, I know we talked about this at one point, probably two years ago, maybe a year ago now. When we, when someone resigns, we, district, we do some type of exit survey or no?
We do.
Okay. But obviously they're not, they're not required to take it.
Correct. Yeah.
If they do, do we have any, well, we got fifteen, give or take, whatever. Um, do we have anybody who did that? Do we know why?
We don't have any solid data for this year, I'll be honest. Um, I've had, I had a conversation with several of these people that decided to leave. And, um, they're all different things, just like they are any year. Um, some people found, um, roles closer to home, um, that was a better opportunity for their family. Um, some people, you know, saw the writing on the wall a little bit and said, I want to go somewhere where I feel like my position is a little bit more secure. Um, some people were, um, you'll see we had a few, um, leaves of absence that did not return. So those were people that, um, you know, took a year off whether to stay home with families or to try something new and decided that, um, they were not planning on coming back. Um, so it's a little bit of everything. Um, but we don't have any good data for this past year.
Anything else? Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, number six, discussion on teacher leadership roles at Norton Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. Uh, I know we have a number of teachers here tonight. Um, Mrs. Libertori from Norton High School, um, has been a great spokesperson. I don't know if that's the plan for tonight or if we have somebody else that has.
Yeah, I mean, we, we wanted to provide you with impact documents, which I think we did at each level for the high school level, the middle school level, and obviously the elementary curriculum for this as well. And so we all, we just wanted to make ourselves available for any questions on if your constituents had any questions regarding, what is the impact of not having an academic coordinator at the high school per department? What is the impact for not having a team leader with middle school study and the same thing for curriculum leaders as well? So we have representatives from all three levels here. If you have any questions regarding any, we just didn't want to email them to you. And then if you had follow-up questions, um, we certainly could do that. I think Mrs. Webber also wants to make a statement from the N T A as well.
Thanks. Um, well, I'm a former, Amy Weber, I'm president of the N T A and I am a former curriculum leader. Um, so I can speak to the value of this position from personal knowledge at the elementary school, but I worked this summer very closely with, um, representatives from the middle school and the high school. And we worked, we met with Jen and we tried to come up with creative solutions, but really what we found was that, um, the amount of work that is done in these positions needs fair compensation. And unfortunately, Jen, as much as I know she wanted to, was unable to provide that. So unfortunately, a lot of this work is going to go undone, um, which is going to hurt, which is going to make life hard for the teachers and the students. So it's just, I just want to make it known that we don't want the kids to suffer, but we also want to make sure we're not working for free.
Thank you, Amy, and thank you, Marcus. Thank you to all of our teachers that are here tonight. Um, as, um, Amy mentioned, I did a lot of work this summer with the, um, for teachers association and with teacher representatives, um, taking a look at these teacher leadership roles. Um, for those people who are not well aware, um, for as long as I've been in Norton and Mark will tell you even further back, um, we have had some sort of teacher leadership role at all of these levels. At the elementary level, they were originally called unit leaders. We changed that job description a number of years ago to make it more focused around teaching and learning. Um, as they have team level, team leaders at the middle school and then at the high school, those are academic coordinators who, um, serve as the leaders of their department. These positions are extremely important. Um, we had a lot of conversations, I think, for those people in the audience who know my background. I led teaching and learning efforts here in Norton for twelve years. Um, I was a classroom teacher prior to that. I wrote my entire doctoral dissertation on the importance of teacher leadership roles, specifically at the elementary level. Um, and we had a lot of really great conversations about the importance of these roles and what they mean. And I think I was very honest with the union when I said, I wish I could. But ultimately, at the end of the day, I just simply don't have funding for these things to happen. And I also said, I'm not going to ask people to do things that used to be a wronged position without being fairly compensated for that. I will, I will not ask people to do that. And we are, you know, we're understanding that there are going to be things this year that get picked up and done because it's good for kids. But we're also understanding that there are certain things that we're not going to be able to do as a school. And I think that's just the reality of, of what we're working with, um, right now. Um, as I said to the entire staff on our welcome back day as part of my speech, I, but we're still going to provide high quality teaching and learning experiences to all of our students. That's what we do. That's what we do best. Um. Some of those other things are, are going to be the challenge. So, um, I know you have the impact statements. Um, I, I'm sure that if you had questions or if you wanted a brief description from each of, um, the levels on what that looks like, I'm sure they'd be willing to do that. Um, but I also. I think I was very honest with you guys about just how I wish, there are certain things I wish I could do and it's just not.
Well, I'll add if I can, from the building level, Amy misspoke. It's gonna make it terribly difficult on administrators too.
Sorry. I know that. I know that. Should have said. I do know that.
So, um, you know, when you think about a car, how many wheels does it have? And immediately you think four, but it has five. It has a steering wheel and that's the one that I, I would want the most in any type of challenging type of situation. It's very important, the stuff that they do to help us move and push initiatives. I know people are concerned about student-facing positions. These are student-facing positions. They key the communication with parents and families when you transition from the elementary model and you have that homeroom teacher. They serve as that nice transition into middle school, helping parents and families navigate the four or five different teachers that they have now. Our I M T S S, the whole entire structure was built around this teacher leadership model. Uh, P B I S, how we've been able to take what Marty did here and roll it up. The team leader is central to that. Even as far inside this week, we have five girls. Who's responsible will have the walkie-talkie as we check in and make sure everyone's accountable. That's always felt, felt the team leader. So even things like that, a field trip, seventh grade plans a big field trip to Six Flags, brings two hundred kids. I get nervous I would bring one kid, mine, and it'd be a, a production of packing things and everything else. They bring two hundred kids to Six Flags. That takes a lot of, um, you know, effort, energy, you know, knowledge that they have and it takes it off my plate so I can continue to do the role of the, that the principal has. So the impact is huge and I think a- as soon as possible, hopefully as we start to rebuild the district, that these positions are prioritized. They have been, when I first came to Norton, uh, like over ten years ago and I had team leaders, I, I was like, I felt like I had everything. I felt like, uh, we could do anything and we could achieve anything because I had a structure around me. Uh, so very important position, might not be obvious to people outside of the school, but inside it's a, it's a glaring hole in our school right now.
I'd say I'm super grateful that, that you guys took the time to put this together because I, I have to say, and I'm, I'm a little embarrassed to say, I mean, I, I put both of my kids through Norton Public Schools. I've been on school committee and this is my ninth year. And I truly didn't know all of this. And so you see it in black and white, white and you read it. And you're like, I had, I, I, I mean, I knew how much work that you guys did, but I didn't understand until it was right there in front of me. So I'm grateful that you guys, um, put this together because I, I think it's important for townspeople to understand what was happening and what is now not going to be happening. And, you know, like Jen said, I mean, you don't want kids to suffer, but I, we also don't want you guys to, to volunteer for more than you already do.
You don't want kids to suffer, but I we also don't want you guys to to volunteer for more than you already do because you do enough of that. So what's the like, what what's the balance here? Like, what's the plan? How do we, what do we do? Right? And I don't know that there's an answer for that tonight, but I think that the the questions need to be asked and the dialogue needs to be started. Because is this, is this the field of pain that 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 people would like to see? Is this it? I I don't know.
I I think it it just, it quite frankly comes down to. You know, with the old saying, robbing Peter to pay Paul, well, they're both broke. So a- and so if we had funds to institute this, that means funds don't go somewhere else. That's. The reality of our budget right now. I mean, I didn't start the topic, but. And and I can, I shudder to think what that looks like. Cause I I I can't imagine it's gonna be a heck of a lot better than it has been in the past few years. Um and again, and I to, you know, piggyback, I I mean. I thank you guys for coming. I remember having this discussion from a few years back that I was on negotiations because these positions came up. And again, it's it's one of those things where, you know, in until Principal Hayward just mentioned it, I mean, you know. Simple as a walkie talkie and a fire drill. Uh those are just small little things that you that you don't think about as an outsider looking in. So. Um I do want to say thank you to everybody for the statements. I did, you know, read through them all. And it is, it's just another challenge we're going to have to try and overcome at some point. Um as we start to hopefully bring things back that aren't here now. Um and we'll have to just take a look at everything top to bottom like we've done in the past and. Try and prioritize what we can and um. That's all I can assure you that we can do. You know, as we start looking what next year and the year after and things like that, and uh we will keep everything in mind and keep everything on the table as we've done in the past.
I'm just wondering, I I know that this is now, because you guys made this to us about got a public record, is there a way to like share this with the public? You know, is there a way to kind of put some of these, but I mean, I know that, you know, these are pages and pages long of how much work that you guys do. But is there a way to kind of share this with families so that they can understand what they may not see? This year, this school year, like we need to get more people involved in understanding the consequence of this action. I've said that. Term the entire time raising my children. I've said it a number of times here at school committee, like there are consequences for actions. We can discuss how you guys want to do that. Absolutely. Figure out a way to share that information. One of the things I was going to say is that, you know, for people that are familiar with our contract, um in the back there are stated decisions and um. It's public record. Anyone can go in, see what these statements are. In the grand scheme of the amount of work that goes along. As you've seen here tonight and you've obviously reviewed prior to our meeting, it's not a lot for. The amount of work that is done by these individuals. When you add it up. And we're we're looking at, we're looking at three point four million dollar deficit. It saved a position in now. And and that's and that's the the challenge, right? And it's. As as Dan said, it's it's robbing Peter to pay Paul. None of the decisions were great decisions when you have to cut that deep. Um and it's and it's really challenging, so I I think it's important for people to understand that. Even what they were being compensated was probably not necessarily a fair amount. These are the challenges that we're facing.
If if I could for just a minute, just to try and. Provide a little bit of, you know, additional connective tissue because really, teaching and learning is organizational. And the work is optimized when you have people at all levels really synergistically involved. And because we have great people, because we're going to continue to move forward, we will. But the real way to have that systemic lasting, long term impact is to have that teacher leadership. Working in conjunction with principals and and district office. Um. You know, last year for for us and for the work that we did particularly around. The elementary curriculum and the and the field testing and the work that people did, like there is a direct positive impact there. And I know that finances are very difficult, making choices is supremely hard. But we really are become an enhanced turbocharged teaching and learning organization. When we have all of those facets together, it becomes much more difficult when there's not that layer of infrastructure.
That's why I think it's important to to keep having these conversations and that's why I mentioned sharing this with parents because I can tell you as a parent. I I would want to know, I would I would want to know this stuff and I just, you know, I I I'm a little bit fearful that, you know. Everything that happened, happened last year. We've all had great summers. We're back and, you know, Norton's a great district. However, we still have this doom of the budget hanging over our heads. Right? And so how do we navigate through that as a school system, as a community? So I just, I I don't. Like, I so appreciate all the work that you guys do in in the schools, day in and day out. But as a community, we we need to figure this out together because I I just, you know, you look at the list of of people leaving and, you know. We we don't want to keep that happening. We don't, we don't want people to keep thinking that it's not a secure place to be. That's that's sad to me. This is a special district and our teachers do go above and beyond. So I just, I don't want to lose sight of the difficulties that. We do have, even though we are a great district and we do a lot with very little. I just want to make sure we are constantly always talking about the budget and how to move this forward. Cause these are some scary things that are happening. They really are. So I I don't know.
Can I tie into three comments? I'll I'll be quick. Um Mr. Hayward's comments, uh we're now entering open house season, believe it or not, for our eighth graders down there. And they're going to be going to open house. And we know they have choices and their families have choices. We think our choice is obviously the best, because we know what goes on here. This will be the first time at our open house in early November that there won't be any content specialists there. So they'll go to some of our competitors, private schools, vocational technical schools, and those schools will have the department that's there. And they'll explain the pathways and the scope and sequence and all the different types of courses that are offered at those high schools. And we'll just have our district. And and we want those eighth graders to be at ours. And and as Mrs. Cohen said, in terms of things and getting this out to the community. Um she attended our Memorial Day Assembly last year and how our whole school community is galvanized around our local veterans. That type of function may not happen this year. And that that's just a tough thing to say to our veterans, obviously, because we support them so much. And then thirdly, as Mr. Martin said. When we think about preparation for teacher and learning, the high school is eighteen months away from accreditation visit. And a NEAS visiting committee is going to come in to hopefully reaccredited Norton Norton High. There's so much prep work and self-study that goes into that. Would you have to do a deep dive into your curriculum instruction? And the department has been responsible for that ten years ago when we had a visit and did receive our accreditation.
So. Last meeting, it was about the music department. Those are second position. If those, for some reason. Don't actually get filled, can enough money be allotted? Here. Like, can it be, it would be a very small percentage of what would be to happen. So theoretically, um. That's probably. All in, like fifteen thousand? But, yes, right? And that's what, and that's, Audrey, that's exactly what we've tried to do this summer.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the the key example of that was um the team chair at Norton High School resigning. And taking Mrs. Better, who has background in special education and. Giving her the responsibilities of the team chair so that we could free up that funding to support little dancers. Um so we are looking at all of those. We're trying to be super, super creative. Christina and I sat down today and looked at the dollar amount and. We're always trying to be as creative as as we possibly.
On that note, I know and Jen knows this, the NTA is still, we're still open to talking and being creative and thinking of, you know, ways. To make these positions happen, but right now we haven't been able to find a way, but perhaps more money is coming, things like that. Um but Jen knows we're willing to talk about, you know, we're still at the table.
That was my two questions. One, chapter seventy five.
Yes.
Over that additional money, have we earmarked that for anything yet?
That's actually our next topic.
As a part of the contract. Mr. Live, you're teaching your four classes right now still or you know?
No, because there are no academic coordinators.
Everybody is backed down for the fall.
And that was certainly something we talked about over the summer in terms of impact.
That was gonna be my next piece, like, is there a way to? Use you for example, to Mr. Lib. Remove one of his classes, spread those kids out. I know this is gonna be very difficult, obviously, to do this in the fall, but looking forward. The compensation would be you have one less class, however, you're not getting the stipend, which is going to cost us a hundred and sixteen thousand ish dollars.
So the other challenge with this is that in the last two years, we've lost. An English teacher, a math teacher, a science teacher, a social studies teacher, a music teacher. That's twenty five sections. Of classes that people were teaching and those roles no longer exist.
Totally understand that. I I get that and I understand. We don't want to increase class sizes. I understand that, but. We have to do something. If we want to bring these positions back, we don't have the magic bullet to say, hey, we have a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, come on, bring those positions on back. So if the, I would like to see from admin, what are some options, you know, from the teachers' union? What can we do? What are some? You know, stipulations that they're looking at and and if we can help with the negotiations, I would totally help.
And and we've talked a lot.
From our standpoint, it's just very difficult because. Back to your point. We know the needs, you know, we see them. Obviously, this was very, I don't mean, I will lie, I'm not ashamed on that, that like. You know, we all went through the schools, we're like, oh, yeah, this unit leader, that's a teacher, yeah, okay, cool, you know. And then when you actually see it on a paper, it's kind of like, oh crap, there's way more. Paperwork, I guess, if you will, you know, behind the scenes. The problem is is if we just sit here and keep looking at it and you guys say this. And we, oh, we have no money, great, and we all put our hands up and we have no budget. I know, we know what happened to towns. There is no override coming. There is no money coming. It it it, we are, we are what we are at this point, you know, so we can keep talking about positions being cut unless, and that the the town's voted. He voted, he voted very, very. To the point, you know, I think it was very, very clear. This wasn't, you know, a swing of five votes, fifty votes. This money is not coming. We have to start finding a plan between the school committee. Teachers' Union and building administrators and central admin to start really figuring out how we're going to fix some of these problems. By just sitting here and going back and forth and listening to the stories, I think, right to Dan's point. I would love to give you a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Where's it coming from? Do you want, dude, should we, should we be cutting another administrator to say, hey, we're gonna cut that administrator to fund these administrat- to help with the with the building stuff? It's, you know, all we're doing, we're getting recommendations from the superintendent. We look at it, we try to move things around, saying, wait a second, that maybe this would make more sense here. This would make more sense here. That's where we're at, you know, so. I get it. I understand the frustration. I I totally understand that, you know, if if you want to say it, we're going in the wrong way, fair. We have a lot of smart people in these schools. We have a lot of smart people on our central administration. We have to start finding solutions. As hard as those solutions may be. If we have to increase a class size from nineteen, twenty, twenty-two at the high school level to twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, guess what? In a year, two, three years, they're gonna go off the higher end and those classes are gonna be forty, fifty, sixty, eighty, a hundred and ninety in the big lecture halls. We have to start finding ways that we can think outside the box and start getting to solutions. If we don't, we're just gonna sit here every single week and keep doing the same thing. Open, there there's gonna be no data. It's just gonna be doom and gloom and we're gonna go into the next budget season and we're gonna be sitting on it, looking at the same thing going, well, I guess move this to there, move that to there. The money's not coming. You've got to find other solutions.
So I would say this summer, we look to a lot of creative solutions. Um and so when you think about. Twenty-five sections that use exists that don't, our class sizes are nowhere close to nineteen, twenty. They are much, much higher. We've got many sections that are close to thirty at the high school. We are definitely working on solutions. We can, we had a lot of conversations about different ways that we can make this work. And at that time, we just couldn't come to a better level than that. I think, as Amy said, they're willing to continue talking. I'm willing to continue talking. Ultimately, at the end of the day, our goal is the same. We want what's best for students. And. We'll figure it out. And so I think the fact that you have. Um your union here willing to have a conversation, your teachers here willing to have a conversation during a negotiation year. It it shows, number one, the relationships that we have as a as a school community and it shows. The partnership that we want to share with our community. And we're all, we're all on the same page here. And so, um, yeah, we'll continue to look and we'll continue to be creative um as we have.
So one one question. If whatever's creative solutions we come up with, we can. Maybe slowly add these in at different levels or whatever that might look like. We wouldn't be in a position where like, I know Mr. Lib. Has you. So it wouldn't be like all of a sudden say Friday, we can institute it. Monday, you know, all of a sudden, Mr. Lib has one less class. We have to find something else. So it's gonna have to be like growing pains this year. Like, we can't just institute this and then, because we're gonna be scrambling to eventually find a section.
The best we could hope for is to make adjustments for the spring semester. In in certain places, but I I think that at the high school, right? The high school is the only place where that um course load is different. But at the middle school.
Relief from fall of spring because it's.
It it depends. So it depends on what before teaching electives and all of those. That that would be the resolution. It would be really difficult to do that. So I know that I've kind of talked a lot about this tonight and I just want to, because I kind of consider this like my goodbye tour, like I want to make sure that I like. Farewell, right? At this age, you never know what will happen. Um I just want to make sure that I take the opportunity every meeting to kind of say. What I really need to say, especially when there's people sitting here, there's people watching, whatever. And so to the staff that's here tonight or that are watching, like, I I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry that we're here. It's it it is not comfortable to to sit here and have to go through this. Um it's not how you think you're gonna leave something when you've really worked your tail off to to make it something. So I just. Want to make sure that I I say that out loud and so that you guys can hear me and and hopefully believe me when I when I say that. But I also want you guys to still come to us and and kind of hold us accountable and like Jen said, let's let's work together to see. You know, I I don't want there to be. You know, issues between, you know, us and and staff, like, let's try to keep the dialogue open and and work together to see what we can. Maybe accomplish together. I've said it for years, doing stuff in town, the more people working towards something, the the more solutions you can find and and good things can happen that way. So. I just wanted to make sure I said that.
And I think it's also important too, from from our standpoint. I wish this conversation happened back in February, March and April. When we were starting to get that list of like, hey, this is what's on the chopping block. This is what we're looking for. And I know obviously there's a piece of this too that. Where Jen's trying to protect staff and not, you know, I'm not saying, you know, scare people off in February that this position might be coming. But you know, where it's a a little bit more of a group position that we're looking at, like, this would have been great conversation to have. We would have had a little bit more like, okay, hold on. What if we reduce instead of cut the entire thing? You know, it it might have been able to give us a little bit more of a, you know. I don't know, a a different perspective maybe on it. I feel like unfortunately now, just like last, well, two weeks ago, it's like. We hear from people, but it's at the very end of the, at the, at the end of it, where the decision's been made, you know. Uh so again, that, I think as we kind of go through this. Amy, I'm looking kind of at you like, we we want to make this work. You know, we are on the same page. I we we've covered this stuff. Like, we we are trying to do what's best for our students, just like you, you know, and I know between us. With with central administration, like, we need to kind of figure out ways to kind of make this all work. Um so again, I mean, I guess that's kind of what I'm looking at. And then my next piece of this, this staff survey, that was a part of this, you know, as far as academic coordinator. Um and whatnot. Can we, I I'm assuming, maybe I'm wrong, but. Is there a moment in the survey that just, uh?
It was as simple as that. It was done by the NTA building reps. So every building, the five buildings have building reps from the association. So and it's actually from June of twenty twenty-three when there was a potential of cutting academic coordinators that. And what Mrs. Cohen is saying, you know, she she just wanted to say she supports us. Well, I I think the NTA building reps wanted to do that because they felt the fear. Of the staff not having that support of their department leader, their curriculum leader. And so they wanted to sort of garner the staff's feeling. And so they wanted to sort of garner the staff's feelings about what is, what does this cut potentially mean for you, if you're in whatever department? And there's a question there about the accreditation, because we're all sort of nervous about that, and we wanna be prepared and ready for that. And, I mean, they do a very deep dive into all your curriculum outside the align with the state framework. I meeting state law, your unit plans, per course. So that's an incredible amount of work that's heading our way in eighteen months, and. When this almost hit last spring in twenty twenty-three, I mean, you can see some of the staff sentiment and fear with this potential cut, because they're used to being supported. Almost immediately by their department head. And, and, as Mr. Hayward said, it's kinda hard to run downstairs, or if you're on the third floor of middle school, a, a, and ask a question of him. Or Mr. Goldstein, if they're tied up in, you know, with some situation, and same thing with our administrators. They're not supposed to be experts on eight curriculum departments. And that, you know, my analogy to the eighth grade parents going to these open houses, they're gonna have questions about. Science questions that maybe some of our administrators can't be able to answer. And so.
Uh, just to add to that, one of the, uh, key roles principals have is staffing the building, quality staff. And team leaders through my, uh, decade here have been. Key to when we get good young talent in, making them feel supported, helping them grow. And that's how we hold on to a fantastic teacher who's step two. And they don't just go, ah, I don't know, this is, because they, they're in a position in their life where they can take chances and leave. So how do you retain people who have everything going for them? They're gonna boatload of good recommendations, they got good experience. And they, they look great on the pay scale for every other district around. You make them feel supported and connected. I'm one guy. He's one guy. You know, that really happens through the team leaders and that close model, shoulder to shoulder right in there, and so like Mark said, like. Our teachers being able to go to that, I've seen it so much that they really build. Well, Christine's team went out for dinner in the summer. I got a great new science teacher on there, you know, those type of things that just take place. A, a huge part of recruiting and retaining talented people, that student base, we like that.
Now, just, I mean, obviously, I think with any job, that, some of that happens holistically a little bit as well, like, do we have like a mentorship program?
Yes.
You do, you do, okay, so like. So like, if a new person comes on, I'm sure even with a team leader, or without, there is some type of support for that person.
Actually, Mr. Lib is one of the core leaders of the program, along with, um, Ms. Alex.
Yeah, that's all why we're doing this.
But it's targeted.
But it's, it's not, it's not what I'm talking about, shoulder to shoulder close thing. This, this person's dealing with the same kids, the same parents. That type of teaming model, which is what New York Middle School has always been known for. We've been a model to schools throughout the state. I'm on the board, been doing the league of middle schools, we're a spotlight school. We had schools come out to us frequently, come out and visit to view our teaming model. So that, you know, that's good, it's key, it's part of the law. What we have is. Uh, what we've had here is really special in that. Um, it does, it's more than that. It's more than just having a mentoring program and checking a box what you do. There is some support and kind of onboarding into our system. But it's that day-to-day thing, uh, which is irreplaceable. And, you know, we'll have to find a way, like I said, it's obviously a bigger thing. I probably say some things, I'm making the union mad about. All the stuff, and some here, whatever, I have my own thoughts, but. I'm just here to highlight how important these positions are, uh, to our kids and what makes our schools feel a good place.
Is there a way to, though, my math might be off, but I believe there was like twenty-seven stipend? Positions between the district, is that correct? Right? Uh, I'm, I'm, okay. I'd say that's probably relatively close, okay? Um, is there a way? To think about, and I, again, I don't, I'm not there, so I don't know, but, like. Okay, at the high school, if we could have four, or if we, just to start, like. As we rebuild, or as we, um, think about how this can eventually get back to the twenty-seven. Like, for each school to kind of think about, you know what, if we could at least have. Two for whatever, or, you know, is there any possibility of like? And screeching us a bit? Uh, we could just.
They did have one, one question, although when we think about it, like, like, using the middle school as an example, because I know I have one, is there one for white, one for purple in each grade?
Yes, there's one for team, so, and there's six teams, and then we have one for specialist team.
So like, in the event to Christine's point, if we can start bringing it back, like, could. Is something better than nothing, like, if we have funding for one for sixth grade, one for seventh, and one for eighth, is that better than the alternative, which is not?
Something's always better than nothing.
I'm just saying, I could be, that's what I. Slowly crawl back, but like.
Yeah, we, I, I, we can absolutely look at it in the rest of this conversation.
It was like.
I think it would be, we would have to sit down and really look at, okay, what would this entail, right? So if, if we're gonna have just one person for sixth grade, what would the responsibility be? Because if, if you're one, only one person, you can't do everything, right? Um, and I was even, like, if you did a K one and a two three, like, yeah, again, we couldn't do everything. So we, we could absolutely look at that and have some conversations, and. If that's what we.
I think the high school would be. I don't know, that there's a. Bigger solution, like, like, if you're, if you're in for history, you can't be that for all language.
I'm not gonna help the world dying.
Good. The high school is nine, correct? The high school has nine.
It is nine, and one, one is including guidance, so there's eight curriculum departments and guidance.
Okay.
We have a. Wait, we have a team leader for guidance? So there was a academic coordinator for guidance, and that was before the move that happened over the summer.
Yeah. So maybe we could look at. For high school? Just, you know, we'll continue to have conversations, but we, I appreciate, and I, I don't wanna speak for the teachers, but I appreciate you guys kind of hearing. This out, um, and it was, we spent a lot of time this summer having different conversations. They spent, um, the teachers and the representatives spent a lot of time putting their ideas and thoughts together. We tried to think really creatively. Um, so I, I appreciate.
Well, that's why, that's why it's important, right, for us to do this and have the basic, because like, you just coming up with that example, that's what I mean, when we're all sitting in a room talking. Like, and, and we start to figure out ways that this might happen, so.
And this is incredibly helpful.
Yeah, for sure.
To have all of this information, and I think if there's other. Aspects that, I don't know, word of mouth, and people are like fearful of something, you know, I think. The more information, we're not there every day, and again, we get recommendations from admin, so. We kinda are stuck in a rock and a hard place, too, so the more we have, the more, the more information we have, the better.
It was enlightening to us, too, to actually work together at all three levels.
Yeah.
Because specifically, I didn't know a day-to-day routine of a team leader or an elementary leader.
Yeah.
And to find out, you know, how it may affect students, like a third-grade field trip, which is. Sort of, the, the, almost a highlight of their third grade that may not happen, because there's not a, like. At the high school level, you may, well, it's just a field trip, but it's so important to them, and it was great for us to do that.
Yeah.
So is it, is it realistic, Jen, to, to maybe kind of set an expectation of, do we revisit this in? A month, two months, like, how do we, because what I don't want to happen is we sit here and talk tonight, and then we all kind of move on with our, you know, our days, and so, like, how do we circle back to?
My, my recommendation is that we can continue to have conversations, but then we circle back after fall town meeting, would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Because I think that way we'll know, we're gonna go into, um, the fall town meeting boards next. Um, we'll know if we're getting any additional funds and what that amount is.
Yep.
Um, at that point, and that will also give us a good perspective on, are there changes that could be made for second term or second semester at high school? So that, that would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Perfect.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
You guys wanna stay, you're welcome, but if you don't wanna go.
Thank you.
All right. Bye, guys.
Yes, I see.
Oh, you mind if you don't? All good, all right, continuing, um, review and vote on town meeting articles, and Mrs. Had.
Um, we, the memo that, um, we dispatched is for that, we sent two sound off for the supplemental. Um, how we were at article for being, uh, for actual. This is the amount that we spoke about, um, seven, actually, we shed chapter seventy money that we got from people. Um, so we're asking the town to, um, appropriate borrow transfer from available funds, a hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and two dollars, to add to the, um, at one twenty-five school project budget. Um. At this time, we are anticipating using these funds, um, of the one sixty-eight or two. Sixty-eight, a hundred, to a new special education added district, we'll add that to the plan. Um, over the summer and up until Monday. We had, um, three lebens, we had one added district that moved out of the district, we have three that haven't moved in. We do have those placeholders that we always earmark the budget that add a district, um, so this would just be, be one that we have just sent out. And next, um, would be anticipated homeless transportation budget. We did increase our budget this year for that line, but. It, we still were a bit conservative due to, um, budget issues. And so, um, we're still running around two hundred thousand plus past several years. And so this is, will most likely be used for that as well, and then just other special education costs, um, that might come up. And also to help reserve our circle breaker fund that we. Have drastically drained its test.
Yeah. Um, so as Christine just shared with you, you know, we have some ideas about this hundred and sixty thousand dollars, as, um, Mr. Schlecker inferred earlier, it's, it's not life-changing money. When we think about, you know, the bottom number of our, you know, thirty-four million dollar budget. Um. We always have these un- unanticipated costs every single year when we take a look at, um, special education costs, students that are coming in. Other communities that were now responsible, um, for, uh, funding. And then students that potentially need to be, um, in, in a, you know, a different placement that's more appropriate for their learning needs. So those are the things that we always, um, you know, get a little nervous about. Um, I think if anywhere we have flexibility within this, it would be in that line for the homeless transportation. Uh, this is something that is very challenging to predict, as, um, Christine mentioned, we, we spent over two hundred thousand dollars. These last few years on homeless transportation itself. Um. But we don't have a ton of wiggle, i- is what my point is. Um, we've met with Mr. Units, our town manager, um, and James, our accountant. And they've been very, you know, forthcoming with us in terms of, um, availability. We've talked about this chapter seventy money, we're all on the same page about it. Um, so it's just really more of a popularity at this point to book that process. Um, but it is important that we receive those funds so that we have, um, the ability and, um. A little bit of flexibility to take care of these costs. So. I'm very grateful to our lawmakers that approved a hundred and four dollars per student versus thirty.
That's nice.
I'll take the seventy-four dollars, we're right, we get it, um, you know, but, no, it's, this.
It's better.
A hundred and sixty grand versus nothing. As Mr. Hayward said earlier, I'll, I'll take some versus none. So, I'll have no problem with that.
Yes.
So, you know what, we'll take it. We will take it, just say, but then, I'm sorry, I need to talk to Mrs. Had, build a better second, um, article here.
Okay. Um, the second article is, um. Asking the town to, um, the same appropriate borrowing transfer, any available funds for our schematic design for them, to be a project that the roof, um, is just. Are the process that they go through, um, we have to go to town meeting to see if there's any available funds. Um, to provide this design, which we will achieve that facility space for that.
Can we just sum up that total right now?
We do not.
But we'll have that.
Yes, yes, um, so ultimately, um, as all of you know, we have put forward a, um. Application for the MSBA, uh. Accelerate, accelerated repair program for the middle school roof. They came out the week before school started. Um, we and I walked the roof with them, it's, you know. I, I feel pretty good about it, because they kept saying, oh, wow, oh, wow, um, so. There was definitely a lot of, um, issues to show them. We will not know if we've been accepted into the program until the end of October, right around Halloween. Uh, so this will be a number, um, we're actually fairly confident that we can potentially use our facilities revolving account. Uh, to pay for majority of the schematic design fees. Uh, however, we have to have it on a warrant. It's gonna have to appear in worst case, or, or best case scenario, we can pull it at that last minute and say we're all set. So, just, um, we need a vote from you on this.
Anyone have a question, just comments?
Are we anticipating, I mean, this is just formality, but are we anticipating this being issued as an article, like, most people? I, I would say that perhaps you might know better than I, um, after meeting with Mr. Units, we're on the same page about it, so.
Historically, when it comes to a project like this, it, it's, there's a little bit of yapping. The lack of veteran, we usually, it's still, just like every other warrant, it seems like there's a lot of discussion, but then it ultimately goes through. I mean, if it's a huge number, there could definitely be some, much, right?
And, and it shouldn't be. It should be roughly. Thirty thousand-ish is what we're, we're projecting at this point.
It just, it's one of those things where it should, we wish we had a little more time, because if it was thirty and we can cover twenty.
Yes, they don't have it.
Yeah, so it's like, but it's just, it's always with these timelines, it seems like.
Yes.
One is too early and the other one's too late, so.
So, and if we are approved into the accelerated repair program that they have difficulty with offering, um. We would go back at the spring and ask for the full amount to borrow, like, so. That there might be something that is a little bit more challenging, uh, but it definitely needs to happen in the middle school. It's, um, in touch, so.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I think I've been hearing about the roof in a little ten years here, that the building is only.
Twenty-five years old. Twenty-six, twenty-six years old, it's open in that year.
Since I was in, since I was in seventh grade, we heard about this roof.
Yeah, so, and, and as I explained to, uh, the finance meeting the other night, um, it has always had issues since the day it was built. Um, there were holes drilled into it to, to some of the metal aspects to, um, help with ice mounting. And as soon as you drill into it, the warranty is voided, so, um, that was.
Who drilled into it? Who made that call?
Um. It was probably oh, four, oh, five, oh, six, roughly in that timeframe. Um, so, all, all of us. Are now living with that decision that was made, and it was probably made in good faith that that took place. And here we are. So, we are now eligible. It has to be at least twenty-five years old for us to be eligible to be considered. So we just, we're, we're just there as.
What's, what's sad is, is you're only got a twenty-five-year-old roof. It's not that. That's the sad part, but I take it good day.
Right, and the problem is, like, when your parents bought a refrigerator twenty-five years ago, it lasted twenty years, so now you buy one of those. So it's, you know, unfortunately.
And I think it's, I think we heard this, one of the meetings last year, maybe, that it's the inevitability of a flat roof. That's one of the big problems when it comes to construction of schools and things like that, and that's why you see the, the town on the sea center with slopes, because, doesn't just sit on it. Right? Coming dark attacks. Um. Separate topic, do we? Or somewhere related, we have problems with the LG roof as well because of a tree, if we can. We're looking for that because.
Oh, you heard this, that was good, too. Fixed on T-Bank last year.
Okay.
Um, and we've been very fortunate that it's been holding up. We're actually gonna do a, a thing, I don't know. Uh, we're actually, uh, scheduled on the twenty-fifth, um, to have Mr. Lebat join, join us, and we're going to do, um. An update on the capital work that we did last year for you, so, um, that will be. Actually, we need to use capital for that, we would use facilities revolving, which was really great. And that was a problem that had been happening for a long time, um, and it's. Um, in good shape at the moment.
So the, um, hundred and four per student, hundred and sixty, the change.
Yeah.
We, we have had three. Move special, and moving into the district who is going to other districts, correct?
Yes.
We have three and one outs, we've netted plus two. Her merits.
Yes.
So, is there no relief from the district that came from, because it was early in the year?
No, because we go to collaborative pools, so we, we incur that process as soon as we move into the district. If it was a private special education placement, um, up until a certain point, that district will be responsible for work for the, for the year. It's fully, um, a new type of certification, but because they attend collaborative school, we take it on me.
Thanks, Casey. Uh, okay, and then for the ninety-two thousand and change, we're anticipating homeless, obviously, we're anticipating, we don't know anything right off the top of our heads here, if you will. What's in that line now, and what's the history? How much we've budgeted for, and how much we've spent of that line?
Um, we, it looks like over the past five years, maybe around fifty thousand.
Uh, budgeted?
Yeah, um, and then we always ask for a supplemental help, help with that. It got increasingly high. I'd say since COVID, more exchange, um, we do get it. I'd say since COVID market change, um we do get it reimbursed um from the state. The past couple, one year it was a hundred percent reimbursement, it was directly to the town. Another year was set last year seventy five percent. Um so we do get it back eventually the following year. Well, the town gets back. Um and right now we're bumping it up. I believe it was one thirty two for this year.
So we're budgeting right now for a hundred and thirty two? What do we, do we know what we spent last year?
Uh I'm doing it right now for the end year for it and it's like two thirty, thirty two thirty.
So it's already in that loss.
All right, and here's my last point, because I thought this is very important to highlight. We have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars additional to north schools in in some way, shape or form. My biggest concern is when we heard from Keith Clark. That if we went and their overtime obviously has been cut, if it doesn't get reinstated, there's a potential chance of them pulling. SROs out of the schools to go on to their details, the the workloads, obviously. My concern is that happens. If we have no SROs in the school, we have failed as a committee in my regard. To properly s- staff our schools for our school's sake. So I am just very concerned here that I would rather not anticipate. And if we at the end of the year have to find money and beg to beg, borrow and steal from the town to for anticipated cost, I would rather do that. Than to lose our SR, SROs in our schools. This money is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars comes to the town first. The town then has to obviously, townspeople have to allocate it back to the schools. Is there something we can do in that regard to make sure we're not losing SROs out of our schools?
I would say that there is other free cash that's available. Or other departments.
I I think the way chap- and I I could be wrong, the way chapter seventy is worded, it is direct payments to student enrollment. So while the SROs are hundred percent part of our schools. They're not directly paid as school employees and paid as police officers. So you cannot use chapter seventy eight.
Well, we can use this aid, correct, but we could use this aid for something, a dist- for something different. Take a line out of the give. I don't know, so it would be twenty nine thousand back to the town for me to do something like that.
I would say that we should not need to give the town any of that hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Because my understanding is that we have more free cash than was anticipated and therefore. I don't want to speak to the town manager, but basically I was like, I want my hundred and sixty grand. And he said, okay. You know, and there there is going to be other free cash available for other town departments.
So reading between the lines, I, I, SROs.
I I think they should be safe. And then ultimately, right now, we have two. We have two full time SROs. Uh Sergeant Bennett and Officer Burmashaw, they are amazing. They are great partners for us. Um I know Officer um. Mayu was pulled back a little bit um in order to be able to um support the um police department more fully. Uh would you still see her from time to time? Um but I I. And again, I'm only in charge of the schools. I don't want to speak out of turn for anyone else, but my understanding is that that there is going to be other free cash available.
Um any other questions, concerns, suggestions? Um so we gotta vote twice here, right?
Yeah, okay. Dancing, we have votes separately.
Um all right, so the first vote then would be to. Cause we there, all right. Hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and two dollars, the additional amount we don't receive from chapter seventy eight. Minimum aid received per pupil is thirty dollars a student a year, but after final allocation of the cherry street. Minimum per pupil pupil cost is increased to a hundred and four dollars per student. Uh that a hundred and sixty thousand dollar.
Yeah, just the top part is fine.
So, okay, all right, sorry. Uh all those in favor? And then the next one, um. Uh to see if the town will vote to appropriate borrow or transfer from event available funds of the amount that we do not know just yet. Needed for the schematic design of the northern middle school roof project that is necessary for the MSBA's accelerated repair program.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right, last item tonight.
As you can vote on capital improvement plans, back here.
Um so this is the same plan that we showed through July. Um not too much as. This is the same one that we sent through the community. Well. The only difference was the priority that it um that we gave as suggestion is that now the. Hot water heater, the high school that we spoke about that were on their last legs at. So um. Uh they said we janked it, but um the comment that we spoke with him um when it occurred, he said it was on a capital plan. Um so we had to go ahead and purchase the water heater, uh the ones. And um that is up and running. If we do get money for the capital, consider we could backfill it with um the money that we spent.
I think if you have to purchase.
Um we're asking for two. Um we have. You can, but it's not recommended. So we have one going now. The one, the other one gets connected, but um it's not the greatest.
Um one thing I wanna mention with this bus. Uh I think we need to also discuss in capital. Would this can save us with our busing contract? So that we own this bus.
Right, so I think I I got that for you.
Because we definitely, I just happened to see it the other day at Bellingham. Girl soccer, too many buses in district. And it's it's no specialty licenses that the coaches need, so anything under, you know, way to use it for softball. Individual teams, we saw golf using it the other day.
Right.
So I think that's gonna be the key for this one. It's going to show savings because we don't need to order that.
I'm sorry. Sorry. Um also, we can get, as I said before, a little price if we get used, um which is what we did with the red bus.
Big red.
Um and then Erin and I spoke about how much usage that I got last year and it had eighty five trips. And it saved us almost thirty thousand dollars. So.
Yeah, so you could essentially go, I mean, for years, you've been pretty much besides track and football.
Yeah.
Every other sport can do two buses, I would think. Soccer would be the most.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it's, you're absolutely right. Like that, it's it's uh it's actually a cost savings. And that we're able to, you know, have those too many buses. I mean, Mister Hayward uses the red bus all the time or middle school boards unify all of our other things too. So it's. Um we've definitely gotten our our money out of. They're also used during the day for field trips and first to go to to do vocational settings for um all our special education students as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's. But I think that's gonna be one of the keys that's showing, you'd say, somewhere.
Absolutely.
And I think it would. You know, because like I was saying with Bellingham, they only have one team. The same two buses.
And transportation is so outrageously expensive right now. It's unbelievable.
I remember when I used to, when I introduced middle sports, like this is how much my transportation kind of goes crazy.
Yeah.
And that was ten years ago.
Unbelievable.
I'm gonna do my spiel that I do every year with capital. I think we do was completely backwards, to be brutally honest. I think we need to try to adjust of what we do. We wanna go over that again. We can look at the meeting that we did last year at this time. Uh second thing, the water heaters, why do we only have one quarter term? Why don't we have three?
Um that was from August and I can get the.
Correct. We need to make sure we get three folks. I know we've gone through that a bunch of times, you will. Um and then the technology needs to own.
Yeah.
For forty thousand dollars over the next five years. What is, I'm assuming it's on kind of touchscreen board? It's done, okay.
Um and they, so they already proved it last year, this year that it's just the second, it's the second thing. So we have the capital committee. Um should be aware that it's coming. Are you some capital check? No, no, I have.
Yeah, so to your point, that's one of those fixed capital costs because the other, other departments do this for like. And I think that should be a topic for a joint meeting. We need to take a look back as that, I mean.
You aren't spending your money for it.
Yeah, I mean, if it's and and, you know, I don't even remember if finance can be this part of capital. Um it's, it's gonna be a better way to do it, but when. You you know, it's like when you run your monthly budget home, it's like I know my mortgage is X. Don't wanna go out to dinner, you know, it's. And go out to dinner if I only have X amount. That's the problem with, that was my problem with capital. Ten years ago when I did it and it fell in debt for your sake, so it was a different group. I can't, I can't. Somebody needs to take a look at it. Money coming off the top before you even know what you have is ridiculous.
So we used to talk about that though, like we knew how many payments we have left for things that were approved. So we really knew like what the balance was, what was coming off of that. And then, yeah, so we, you know, we did keep track of that and then, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying is is I know we know the amounts, but to me, that should be in that department's budget.
Yeah.
That should come out of the top of their budget, correct?
Um but that happens to us when we're in trouble. So we have to.
Well, that's, I think it needs to be a different process.
Yeah, and maybe that's possible, but I think coming out of our budget, we'll we'll have, we'll have one school left in town. I mean, we can't do that.
Has capital met? Have we met with capital?
Not yet. It's usually before the town meeting.
Yeah, it's only a one or two meetings.
That, when I say, I think we do this all backwards, I think as a committee, we really should revisit how we do it as one. Obviously, we gotta do your part of the pound side as well, but I think also with it. Well, a dance point, I think we just need to kind of look at it from a pound standpoint. And then the trickle down effect of looking at it from our standpoint as well, making sure that we have, you know, what we're kind of seeing. What's our progression? What's our, you know, green light? We have to do this now. What's our yellow? What's our red? You know, so on and so forth. And kind of get a little bit better of an idea. Two, three, four, five years down the road, with the still, the same effect that you're gonna have emergency situations that hop up and you have to do, you know, but. I just feel like we need to start getting a little bit better at this.
I think the hard part of the capital committee is it it's, it can change, right? When there's every year, somebody else. Like I stayed on it for, I think I joined pretty soon after I got on, so it's been like.
It was after my first, yeah.
Okay, so eight years I sat on that committee because I'm like, I wanted some, um, yeah, continuity with the. So but I think it's hard when you start to kind of truck in a certain direction because, you know, obviously, like the town manager is always there. This like board member, thin comment, like they change. So you kind of start to get somewhere and then you have a whole new group. And and they have all new ideas and so it's it's hard having a committee like that. Yeah, and and I think the the difficult part about looking at it from our perspective is like, um, the JCS elevators, a perfect example of this. The building was built in nineteen seventy eight. The elevator gets inspected every single year. It's never been an issue. Until last year, when all of a sudden, we had to install that basically drip pan in the bottom because it was going to be um. An issue with in terms of the land and the soil and everything else. Like, so all of a sudden, that's eighty thousand dollars that. You could never have seen that, honestly. It's it's super frustrating because it does, then it kicks the can down the road for the things. That we know, we know we wanna do. You know, just happened every year. We had a plan as to what we wanted to fund in capital. And then something happens and then we can't, we have to kind of put that down. Yeah, this year's the hot water. Right, yeah.
And I think the way we've done it is historically, it's as it should be at one time. This is probably the first time I can remember where we've had a multiple year payment plan, because we usually tried to not do that like some of the other.
So with, in the past for um mini hands and like the art art small boxes. Um and the technology pieces. Those are, those are the two examples that I can pick up since I've been around, um where we've done those multiple years. Is there a way, I'm just thinking for like future, I mean for myself, but also like future members that come on to the school committee. Can we put like the year that these things are added? Sure, like, you know what I mean? So then that way everybody can see like, oh, wow. That's been sitting there for ten years, like, you know, I I don't know.
And I think that was kind of, uh going off a call code and stuff like, hey, you know, we've had athletic, you know. Replacing the JCS and LG young boys since I come on, you know, and we had a justiness inside. Yeah, it keep, but it keeps going from fiscal year to, oh, we're gonna do it in twenty five, out of twenty six to twenty seven. Dan said it was on when he got in here ten years ago, you know. So it just goes on and on and on.
Because I know the high school one was on there at the very beginning and the only reason we got that replaced is because it was damaged during construction. So that was.
Well, the the middle school gorgeous got to help. Absolutely beautiful. They did an incredible job. It actually makes the room so much lighter. It's incredible job, so.
And then, yeah, so you're gonna give us the other vote, please.
I with the, when, sorry. When we initially get a quote for capital because we have to provide it so early, we don't always, we don't, I think we talked about this last time, we get the multiple because. We know, we don't even know if we're gonna put that on as a priority yet. We want feedback from you guys. And so that's why we just did the generic one. Then once we're gonna do it, we go out and get the real thing. And then we get the real three quotes hence. When we did that with tech displays and elevator, but with um physics ego situation, it literally just went overnight. So.
It's almost like a placeholder.
Right, right. So I think we called someone else, but I'm not even sure if we, we might have it, but it, we just didn't even have it.
And then I think, just another piece of capital, can we, and I think you've kind of touched on this, that we're gonna do this, um, just like. What we've had done, seeing what's going on.
Absolutely, yeah.
What we did last year, where are we at with projects, you know, because I feel like, I love saying that kind of gets lost by the wayside.
Yeah, Wade and I actually talked about that today. He had an update for me and I'm like. And so we're excited and share with you guys in the quick. It's made for going on that, right?
Um, what do I have to say?
Uh vote to.
Vote to approve.
All right, um. Vote to approve the capital pass presentation.
Um, okay, good. Let me just say it officially. Uh vote to approve the capital improve improvement plan as presented. So.
Second.
All those okay. Um, I don't know, this is very public participation. Anyone have anything to say? Or are you getting the meaning?
I have one thing before I have to step out. Um when going through the school calendar, just to sync in my calendar. And it sounds a little crazy, but in March, the um elementary early release day for the conferences, it's listed as the twenty first. But in the calendar, it's highlighted as the twentieth. Whatever Thursday is though, so the twenty also, you should change that date. That's listed. Thank you. Here you go.
That's a good plan in that. Any uh other business from the committee?
I just have a question. Do we have, has anyone uh talked joint meeting yet?
So yes, we um. Not officially, but offline, uh the Fin, I was at the FinCon meeting on Monday, uh we're online, but um. The new head on there reworked finally.
Yep.
Um so Sandy, all our heads, the new FinCon chair.
Okay.
Um Paul Schlecker Sen- Senior is the new vice chair. Uh obviously, strike boards all squared away, so now that FinCom's in, I think the chairs will kind of start making those pushes to some top role on the.
Okay.
On FinCon about getting some.
Okay, yeah, because I know we talked about like every so often.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, just to get ready for the meeting, it's short, but.
And I figured it's kind of right after that. Sounds like the Henry plan is gonna be kind of the chairs and vice chairs. Kind of get on the same page, lay out a calendar for everybody. I'll tell them, you know, kind of what we're looking to do.
Yeah.
Uh I also talked at FinCon, I kind of jumped in the other night about getting what. They want to see from our budget and not telling us in April and May, like, hey, we need this, you know, so I kind of asked them that. You know, whatever they're laying out for all the departments, you know, in terms of what you want to see, how the budget is presented or whatever, give us the most information. So we're prepared. We generally feel like we start our budget a little earlier than, you know, at least it's, it gets a little bit, I, maybe it's more public because we're in a committee. Um but you know, we're starting our budget January, February, that I was kind of like, we need to know what we're looking to do a little sooner because it's not. We're gonna be in the same situation as the world out here and trying to chase off.
Yeah, I think the other part to that is. We have to make sure we can get the information they request easily, because that was the biggest issue last year is. It's a lot of man hours to get what they're asking, so I have no problem getting the information if it's going to be used efficiently, not just. You know, used to blast the schools and the school committee as has been used in the past. Uh but, you know, I don't wanna say no, but if it's extremely realistic and check what the needs are.
Yeah, and I think that's where the piece.
So I also think, um, it's so Christine and I start the budget November, right? We we start, we we. Right, we, we start, we, we literally talked about it yesterday, uh, okay, what do we, what do we wanna do for our timeline this year, what do we, what worked last year, what didn't work, what do we wanna change, so we. At least the two of us start very early, from their principals and our central administrative team, they start very soon thereafter. Um, I think the one thing that is important for all of us to remember is that the role of finance committee is a little bit different when it comes to the school department. The school committee is responsible for the budget, we discuss line ends, we discuss options. You approve the budget. It's the role of the finance committee to approve the bottom line. So I think as, um. I, I think that's just important for us all to remember.
I think you did a very good job of. Doing that in a nice way to them, because like, I, I think with the FinCon, sometimes it does, they have oversight of all the other budgets. They sometimes are looking at us being like, where's all this money going, because we kind of just give them a number to say, hey, this is what we're looking to do, we try to break it down, you know, so, exactly, so. I think ultimately, like, we want to. Extend that olive branch, we want to, you know, have, we want their support, their recommendation does go a long way, and you know, at town hall area, sorry, town meeting, uh, you know, so again, I, I just wanna. Reiterate the fact of, we control our own budget, we are willing to work with the FinCon, and we just need to know ahead of time what exactly they're looking for. We can provide it, we certainly can.
So just two more questions for, for that, so in relation to that, was the request granted that somebody was asking for? We shared, um, the salary information, um, that was requested, uh, during the summer. Yeah, um, and I, my understanding wasn't exactly what they were looking for, um, but certainly took, um, Mrs. Hatfield in her office. A big amount of time to kind of put it together, so, um, I think one of the other things that's really unique about us is I shared that four-page document of all of our staffing changes, so. In a smaller department, like town hall, you might have two or three people move or leave or something, like. That's a huge amount of change, it's very difficult to kind of tell. From year to year, um, so it makes it a little bit more challenging for us as well, so, um, I, I think, as you know, Mr. Schiker said, we. We're a community, we wanna be collaborative, we wanna make sure that we are providing everyone with as much information as, as we can to make number one, informed decisions, um, but also to better understand how. The dynamics of a school budget works, it's, it's very important for people to understand, um, but it's also ultimately the five of you. That over, that over, that is, that is our governing board that I report to, and that we work through this process way, I just wasn't sure if it was a feedback.
I just don't wanna be under like a disproportionate microscope than the other departments, we know we're the biggest budget in town, we have the most employees, we have four pages. But that, that's why, that's why it's always been my concern, as we're under this microscope and we're not treated like every other department, just because we're the biggest. But there's, you know, there should be salary, should we look at salary in every department? They should be looking at the changes in personnel in every department, but it seems like year over year, it's always just.
And I think that, I think that we'll kind of talk about that, and I think one of the problems is town halls, they can pull that information very quickly, off whatever system. HR system they're using, for lack of a better term, ours is a little different in regards of it's not one button, one report, you know, and I think their feedback, Charlie, your point was, we asked for salary. And then we heard the other night that we were like, well, we got salaries, we could look at that in the town report, we were looking at like the whole package, you know, what's the salary, what benefits are people getting, blah, blah, blah.
So they wanna see Jen O'Neil makes X amount of money. She gets this for longevity, she gets this for stipends, I don't get one. What was that, it's just, the like, just, just to make an example.
So from my standpoint, that's over and done with, we, we did what we thought we wanted from the, from spring and summer. That's why I asked them, lay it out for us, give us one cheat sheet, what do you want from us, and then we, the four of us, get to decide. If, hey, yes, this makes sense, we will provide that information with you, or hey, you know what? It's gonna take way too much of our administrative time, we're already shorthanded as is, we're not doing, you know, but we need to know what you want, and we're just saying, we can or can't do, you know, so.
We can email, should be, as soon as. And, and so, um. Nick and Justine, you guys are in our negotiations committee this year, you will negotiate with myself and with our, our lawyer, we will negotiate a contract, which will include salaries. Uh, salary sales, it will include longevity, it will include stipends, all of those things are under the purview of this committee, so. We will do all of those things, um, and ultimately, by being part of that negotiations committee and coming back and working with your colleagues on the committee and recommending, that we approve. Whatever we end up with. That's the prominence of the, of the school committee as well, so I think, um. So all that work that you did wasn't what they wanted? Am I understanding, what did we leave out, Christine, I'm sorry, please?
You, no, I, I don't think, what, I don't think it was.
It's not included, like Jen, it didn't say Justine's salary, I, I put it again. Oh, we included it as like the.
Yes, so you gave them the totality of the number, but they wanted.
The salary, but they didn't break up the line.
Again, it's not, my issue with that is, is again, the best. If you want it that way, you gotta tell us, that is my biggest thing, and again, I will say it again on public record, the school committee is in charge of this, of the school's budget. Not FinCon, I know that might hurt feelings, but that is the true honest statement of what we're doing. So at the end of the day, the five of us with our administration, we will decide what we're putting forward and what we're doing.
I just have one other question, do we have any traction with the independent audit that was, that was talked about?
I think that is going to be the topic for adjournment.
Okay.
They're not gonna put it on the warrant, well, that doesn't sound, I don't know, we haven't done this joint meeting because we're waiting for FinCon.
Okay.
Now that FinCon's squared away, I think, hopefully we can move on this very, very quickly.
Yeah, because I think that's an important thing to, to keep track of, right, because that was an ask of the community that, so I just wanted, I just, I was at the last meeting, so I just wanted to ask. Yeah.
Yeah, windows. Any other questions, concerns, suggestions? Motion to adjourn, someone.
Second.
All those in favor? One zero one?